I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay, call the meeting to order. And certify quorum, the only one we got missing, I believe, is Todd tonight, so.
Why is the, why are the microphones humming at us like that?
Because some of them are too on and they're too close to each other. So, that happens when they do that. Okay, we have a consent agenda, we have treasurer's report, approval of the minutes of April 26, and approved payment of the bills, if we can have the treasurer's report, please, Linda.
May 10th, 2022, treasurer's report, payable checks in an amount of $111,856.45. There are only three major vendor checks this month totaling $78,932.52. Payroll for April 29th, 2022, to include social security and Medicare, $193,881.26. We have two monthly bond payments for the amount of $46,073.17. Grand total payable checks, payroll, and bond payments, $351,810.88.
Okay, get a motion on the good side agenda, Walter makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, old and new business, we're gonna start out with some certificates. We have Pete Hiltner. Yeah, if you could just come up here in the front of the silly, or.
The silly center.
It's like my name, Aiden Gorham, Gorham. And Kyle Rogers, Beth Johnson, Don Maxi, and Jack Maxi. That's about this lineup, yeah. You gonna do that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I can't move too good, so. Yeah, the mayor pro tem here. Yeah, if you can, just right this way and then facing the audience and then they can see you all. Take pictures with the flags in the background and all that fancy stuff.
If you would just read off the list, those are the ones that should be.
Beth Johnson?
Yes.
Really appreciate students. Charles, you wanna get up there?
It's okay.
Peter, Charles. You wanna read it?
Yeah. We appreciate the work that you all did out there for the last several years. You've been volunteering your services. And we just wanna commend you for the selfless service that you've given to our community. So, the city of St. Robert's certificate of appreciation presented to these individuals, Don Maxi, Jack Maxi, and Dr. Beth Johnson, Sergeant Major Hiltner, and Beth Silly. Is that pretty good?
All right.
It's not. The city of St. Robert, Missouri is thankful for your volunteer service that you performed on Earth Day, 24th April, 2021, 2022. Your hard work on beautifying the USO chimney monument sets a positive example for all our citizens and businesses. Our city is proud of your service because you took the time and selfless effort to beautify the USO monument, to make it more fulfilling to all who love it. Thank you for your continued support for the third year and hard work. Signed, Dr. George A. Larson, Mayor of the City of St. Robert.
And everybody.
And an appreciation of what you have done. Just don't make straight Jewish Rome, you'll have chicken and some bread to protect.
Do we have to leave some?
I do?
Yep, thank you. Appreciate your work.
Yes, yes.
3.2 is an ordinance authorizing the disposition of the city's 1998 Whitser Challenger trailer. Okay, read that as a bill, please.
Bill number 22-057, an ordinance authorizing the disposition of the city's 1998 Whitco Challenger trailer as surplus property.
Get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Linda makes a motion, Reggie seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Yes.
Michael? Yes. Any second reading?
Bill number 22-057, an ordinance authorizing the disposition of the city's 1998 Whitco Challenger trailer as surplus property.
Get a motion on the second reading, Michael makes a motion, Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Yes.
Michael?
Yeah. Read it as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3868, an ordinance authorizing the disposition of the city's 1998 Whitco Challenger trailer as surplus property.
Get a motion. Teresa makes a motion, get a second.
Second.
Reggie seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter? Yes.
Michael?
Discussion.
Yes.
In section two, it talks about trading the ladder truck. I just read it.
I changed that.
Yeah, Steve showed up now.
I'll fix that.
Okay.
You changed it, but apparently it's the same.
Oh, yeah, it does.
Good catch, Mike.
With a fix, yes.
Um, John?
Yes. Call the roll. Oh, you need to, we got Teresa and Reggie.
And we did call the roll.
So, John?
It stopped with Michael, so John's.
Oh, it stopped with Michael. Yes or no on you, Michael?
Or say yes.
Yes.
I said yes.
Okay, so moving right along. Okay, 3.3, is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a 2023 Pits? Is that a new trailer? I didn't know that. It's new, okay. Read it as a bill, please.
Bill number 22-058, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a 2023 Pits model LB55-22DC, trailer from Springfield Trailer Incorporated.
Get a motion on the first reading. Walter makes a motion, Michael seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes, is that the same one that they've just traded off? Or they got rid of as one just to replace the one they're getting rid of?
Yep.
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, second reading, please.
Bill number 22-058, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a 2023 Pits model LB55-22DC, trailer from Springfield Trailer Incorporated.
Get a motion on the second reading, Teresa makes a motion, Reggie seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Reggie?
Yes.
Walter? Yes.
Michael?
Yeah, I have a question, don't these things normally go through the public works committee before we bring them up?
Yeah, we had an issue with this because it was, remember we talked about it the last meeting?
Yes.
I wasn't here.
Oh, we didn't have time, so.
Steve, bring it to this.
We saw the data, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Read it as an ordinance.
Ordinance number 3869, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a 2023 Pits model LB55-22DC, trailer from Springfield Trailer Inc.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance, Michael makes a motion, Teresa seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter? Yes.
Yes. Okay, 3.4, I'll let Anita tell you about this.
Yes, this is for an arrow sign that hung on one of the buildings on Route 66. Don Clark and his family wanted to donate it to the city. Beth Wiles and I have been visiting with him. And he came in on Friday and talked to me and I sent it to Carrie and she got it done. This meeting, he'll be in this week to open up the farm gate so we can get it picked up, mayor. The mayor and I talked about this, we would incorporate this some way in the entrance of our neon park. It'll fit a bit fine for us, so I'm excited about it.
Can I, is there a limit? Or is, is there a limit to the number of signs we're gonna try to get?
13.
Oh, good number.
Yeah, we're on 10, I think, now.
Oh, okay.
And we need three more. Okay, read it as a bill, please.
Bill number 22-059, an ordinance approving an agreement and bill of transfer between Don Clark and City of St. Robert regarding the transfer of a neon sign that is intended to be installed in the neon sign park.
Get a motion on the first reading, Walter makes a motion, John seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter? Yes.
Michael?
Yes. Okay, second reading.
Bill number 22-059, an ordinance approving an agreement and bill of transfer between Don Clark and City of St. Robert regarding the transfer of a neon sign that is intended to be installed in the neon sign park.
Get a motion on the second reading, Reggie makes a motion, Teresa seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
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 John?
Yes. Read it as an ordinance.
Ordinance number 3870, an ordinance approving an agreement and bill of transfer between Don Clark and City of St. Robert regarding the transfer of a neon sign that is intended to be installed in the neon sign park.
Motion on the reading, Charles makes a motion, John seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Teresa?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter? Yes.
Okay, wage finance? Need a meeting?
Uh, I'll wait for the meeting, um, we haven't talked to.
So, we'll have one soon.
The, we'll discuss it later, we were looking at some of the positions and restructuring of the employees at the transfer station.
Oh, okay, well, I brought that up to you, to check out.
I don't know if most people would, then I just need to sit down and go over with it to the.
Okay. Okay, public works, Steve, you got anything?
Excuse me, did you say no?
Oh, is this, that was for a committee meeting?
Right, yes.
He never says no. Oh, man.
And since I know I'm okay, what's wrong with you?
And Ricky, you're kind of public works, I need to be asking you because we're looking at an excavator. Did you get a call yet? Nothing yet? Emergency services? Okay, park committee? Okay, comments by Alderman, start down here with John.
I've got one, one item to bring up, I talked with, uh. I can't even think of his name, Walter. Just a moment ago about a problem that has come to my attentions via some phone calls and emails and texts about a speeding problem in Ridgeview, of all places. And I think this is.
Ridgeview or Ridge Creek?
Ridgeview.
The one off of Z Highway?
Yeah, the one off of Z Highway up by the church.
Okay.
A number of people have approached me about the problem. They're concerned about the children that are out playing, of course, I mean, it's an obvious problem. People are speeding down through there, the speed limit is 25. They're far exceeding that, and when approached by some of the residents that live there, they get the finger and all kinds of different words said to them.
A Hawaiian good luck sign?
I'm sorry.
Hawaii good luck sign, that's what it is.
So, uh, we brought this up a couple of weeks ago, I think, and there's probably been some effort made towards countering the problem over there. I don't know, maybe the chief could speak to that. However, one of the recommendations that the residents made were to put up some children playing signs or things like that, I don't know that any exist over there. But that was one of the ideas that came out of some of the discussion that I had with them. And we need to somehow further address the problem to satisfy the residents.
I got, I got something to say about that too, mayor, when it comes to my time.
Okay, well, you can add it now if you want.
Okay, well, a couple of citizens have been complaining about our officers enforcing laws on the, on the highway. Okay, and then also what's happening is they're going on to these ramps and coming off these ramps going like a bat out of hell. So, the people that are.
Which ramp are you talking about?
I'm talking right here by the, um.
What's six and nine?
AT&amp;T.
AT&amp;T, correct, and.
You're talking about the I-44 ramp?
I-44 ramp, and I'm talking about the ramp that's coming off of Cracker Barrel. But if, if you are observing it, these people are speeding like demons, man. And so, probably the people that are complaining about our officers are the ones that are in violation. Or they don't, they're not aware of how bad this traffic is coming through those two exits. And then the exit down here where the true hardware used to be, you know, coming off, coming on to.
159?
Route 66, that one as well. But St. Robert Boulevard is like Indy 500, you know? And, and our officers are trying to enforce the law. Hell, they come through Lenzman going 40 miles an hour. And, and you yell at them and they curse you out, flip you off, or whatever. So, I think our police officers are doing a well-good job enforcing the law. So, if the citizen, if whoever that is complaining about our officers being on that ramp, they need to take a look at what's really going on. And, and you know, allow our officers to.
And I don't want, I just wanna make sure that I put this in a right perspective. That's why I asked what, what ramps you're talking about.
Yeah.
Missouri Avenue.
Missouri Avenue coming off.
Route 66.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yep.
And Y Highway.
And Y Highway.
Are all Mo dot roads.
Exactly, but our officers can enforce.
That's exactly right, but, but, yeah, but, but it's not, um.
That is not their primary business.
That's not their primary mission, though.
Yeah, I know.
That percentage of time out there.
I just wanna make sure people know whose roads belong to who.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Now, on, on the, this is a ongoing issue, okay? It's gonna be that way forever. We can't be everywhere at once, right? So, when people feel our presence, they act accordingly, correct?
Correct.
Most of the time, and then slow down, so it's, it's gonna get back to officer presence and us putting those radar speed trailers back into the neighborhoods, okay? Well, we're currently doing some maintenance on both of them. Got some battery issues that we're getting figured out, and one of them unfortunately is a solar charge field that we are currently trying to figure out if it's worth fixing or to repurchase another one. This is the same time of the year that we usually start getting those out into the neighborhoods. As far as picking up patrol in the neighborhoods, that's gonna depend on the day. There's days that they may not even see one of our residential neighborhoods because they are so busy answering calls and taking care of other business. So, my thing to the neighborhood is, is if they can capture photos of these vehicles, if they can get a split number, we'd be more than happy, especially if it's a repeat offender, to go to those folks and say, hey, we've got several complaints on this vehicle speeding up and down the roadway. We would appreciate it if you, you know, take extra precautions to make sure that you're obeying the speed limit. We have no problem doing that, okay? But you're always going to get complaints from the residential areas for speeding. It's never gonna stop, okay? I look at how we handle the amount of traffic accidents. That's how I gauge if I know our guys are out there doing a good job. Because when we're out there and we are present, you see the accident rates drop. You see less, you know, we probably do six special events a year that we are putting extra officers on the roadways to look for these hazardous, moving vehicles. So, you know, the city of St. Robert is doing what we can do, but you're always gonna have complaints, Mr. Moore, always. You know, especially with, you know, you have a soldier that's been here for, for three years, they move, the next guy moves in and out of set, he sees it, he's gonna come and complain to you. It's still the same problem, but we have a different set of eyes on it. So, that's why we will, we will always have these, these complaints, and they're, they're legitimate. But they help us out if we can get vehicle descriptions, good vehicle descriptions. Times of day, you know, if it's the same vehicle going through it 40, 450, you know, sooner or later, sometime during that week, we should be able to get an officer down there and try to catch them. But I can't promise that all the time either. But we take all of the complaints very seriously. But we have a lot more residential's than we've ever had, so we've only got so many speed trailers and so many officers that we can put in, in those areas. And usually it's the squeaky wheel gets the grease. So, obviously, the, the traffic sergeant, he is aware of that situation. He's trying to get the speed trailers out there running, and we will absolutely get those out there and see if we can dissuade some of those folks from speeding.
Do you think you need more speed trailers?
Speed trailers are effective, yes, you know, could we get some smaller ones that may not be? I mean, we've got the big one that we'd like to use on Mo after, we've got one residential. We could probably use some more, yes.
Maybe that's something we need to talk about.
Yeah.
Follow up.
Yeah.
Follow up on that, whose area of responsibility would it be to put children playing signs and things like that?
That would fill with nothing worse.
Steve, that would be you, wouldn't it?
Yeah, if it's an area that's needed and is requested, we can use it, but some don't know that they help too much. But it just brings people aware that a lot of these speeders are gonna speed, they're not paying attention to those signs.
True, but still, we should make every effort that we can.
Those signs will help you out, Mr. Moore, that way they may stop complaining and stuff like that.
There you go.
And that's what it's about.
That's not the goal, the goal is to try to reduce the speeding if we can, to make every effort at least to do that.
Oh, absolutely.
And one of those would be putting up the signs.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Nothing else. Walter?
Yeah, I just, in my experience with that, they don't feel like they're speeding. They don't feel like they're speeding, they feel like it's, they don't feel like they're speeding. And, and.
Some of them don't.
But they, they've been just.
Some of them absolutely know, and they say they don't feel like they're speeding, but you like some of them don't pay attention.
Yeah, that's right, their car goes fast.
Yes, sir.
And they, so I, I understand, 'cause they kinda, I've been, I rode down there, and they were disappointed with my driving. And so, I just pull over and let her pass. Yeah, I'd drop a hint, let her pass.
Are you too slow, Walter?
I'm too slow. Yeah, yeah, so, I understand, thank you, man.
Reggie?
Nothing, ma'am.
Linda?
I wanna thank Stephanie for keeping, maintaining the dog park. I stopped there the other day, there was like nine cars there, so I said, this is a perfect time to stop and talk to the people and see how it's going, if they have any problems, is there any requests or anything like that? And I asked them, have they been having enough bags? And they said, yes, the trash has been emptied, yes. Their only request is, is if we could put in another table, maybe, not the, not the pavilion, but just another table on concrete. And I mentioned it before, some kind of stepping stones to go from where it's concrete over to that pavilion so that when it's muddy in there, and people do take their dogs in there when it's muddy. I wouldn't, but people do. And then that way they could walk over to the, to the pavilion without walking in the mud themselves. But people seem to be really, really happy with it. They did want to know if we had any plans to expand it in the future. And I told them I didn't know, but there's not a lot of space there to expand. I mean, there's like six feet, maybe, and, and then back behind the parking lot there, there's some space you could go into, I guess, but they did ask about that. So, does our sign down there say that you must accompany your dog into the park?
Yeah, you can't just let it loose.
Oh, well, yes, you can. I see sometimes I drive by there and there's people sitting in their cars and their dogs are running around the park. So, I just wonder if our sign.
Write down their name and get their.
Wondered if our sign says anything, you must accompany your dog into the park. I didn't know if it did or not. But, good job, Stephanie.
I think it says something about supervision.
They do, they do really appreciate it.
Okay, anything else, Linda?
No, I don't, not right now, I have to run my brain, time to think some more.
Charles?
I have two things, one for close. On tomorrow at 6:00 PM, we're gonna have a community salute to service. Governor Mike Parson will be there at the Waynesville Football Field.
Oh, that's changed.
It's changed, where it changed.
To the gym.
To the gym.
To the high school.
Okay, it's gonna be in the gym in Waynesville. Major General James Bonner will be there. And the purpose of the visit is to recognize all the high school seniors from south central Missouri that are going into ROTC programs in college.
Are you guys gonna be televised?
Excuse me, very much, Mrs. Linda, I'm finishing first. Okay, before I was interrupted, uh, we have potholes, and more than one. And they're growing, day by day. And I, I'd appreciate it because the citizens are complaining that we do something about the potholes. And I just saw Mill and Lenzman, but over there in Ridge Creek as well. So, I put it out there on the table, and the other thing is just enclosed, mayor.
Is that?
Thanks.
Teresa?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, moving on to comments by administration, Edna?
Just an update on the sales taxes, uh, for this month, I mean, for this year, 2022. We have a 12.55% increase over 2021. Reported taxable sales in the city year-to-date is $119,958,531. $531. The use tax, for the month of May, we collected $33,571.98. This is the result of $1.5 million for the taxable sales online for the month. Year-to-date, online sales has been reported at $7.8 million since January. The balance in the operating account stands at $2.4 million.
It's going up.
$2.4?
Yes.
Good. Police chief, Curtis?
Close session, sir.
Fire chief, out here, public works, Steve?
Can we still say it? I don't have anything. Okay, the, the power has been switched from the overhead line to the underground. Over there by subway, we're waiting on the phone lines to come down and then we'll move poles in that area. Right now, we're working over on Superior Road Project, we got the brush moved down and the big ravine, and we're starting to fill that, start to fill that today, packing it in. The contractor for the tree trimmings back in town, I think he started over in the Phoenix area. So, we're getting some of those lines trimmed out there. We sent back the rental bypass pump that we had out at pump station six when we was having all that trouble. And two days later, they have a.
They're green.
Let the motor. So, you know, our bypass pump has exceeded its life expectancy, so, so we didn't have an option there to get another one. So, the company that rebuilt the submersible, the permanent motor that's in there, they actually showed up the very next day. There was some shimmying issues in the impeller, so we was able to get it back.
So, we have two motors back in there?
Yeah, we have two motors in there, that's why we sent the bypass back. And I'm waiting on some bids for a replacement bypass pump.
How long before the third one's in?
What's that?
How long before the third one's back?
They're talking like, like July before we go. They're actually covering overseas, so. Well, number nine in the Ridge Creek area, that was over the weekend, it had, had to be replaced, and also the control. It had, had to be replaced and also the control panel. I think that was replaced a couple of years ago, so we're waiting to see if maybe some warranty will kick in on that. May not, but we'll, we'll at least try. And the installation on the utilities over at RV Works continues. We're working on an electric and water now sewer that is just about over.
Thank you. Okay, Don?
We've been working on taking classes on Bradley software and getting all the check marks in proper boxes, a speech exemplar, getting all their stuff done and getting done. We do have another call, I think, next week with Bradley, and then they are sending a representative down here in June to help us get the software up.
Good. Ricky?
I got a couple of things. I got the tunnage report for the month of May. It's one thousand four hundred eighty-two, and it's average June is about two of those per day. Two weeks ago, we WCA pulled out all their dumpsters, and we worked on Friday and Saturday replacing them. They pull them out, we put them in, so we worked all day Saturday on that.
So we've had two weeks of picking everything up, huh?
Yep. That's it.
How's it working? How's the commercial part working for you?
Busy.
I was in town Saturday for the barbecue class. I put the park food on. And at seven o'clock, I ran to McDonald's to get a cup of coffee, and I looked in my rearview mirror and Ricky was in the trash truck behind me. I know he was out there at seven o'clock on Saturday morning, all in trash.
Okay. Stephanie?
Passing around. So to start off, I know we're doing season passes. Passing around what the season passes will look like for those that purchase season passes to come to the pool. We are selling them. People are coming in, visiting now, so we're pretty big. The Plasky Fair is arriving July twelfth. Start the setup, and then they will run from this thing to the eighth thing. And then as far as the pool, we did have a busted pipe and one leaking pipe. Both of those need to get fixed. And so we are looking to slightly start filling up, backwash all the pipes and everything, and then check the plumbing stuff, and then start filling the pool up.
Mr. Rubber Man in the...
Rubber Man has not been yet. I know he's supposed to give us a two free day notice, so if we have water in the field, we can run it down, just to make sure that section's been dry, and then they can put the man in and add the water.
That happened, okay. Tyce, Carrie?
Just a couple of things. Our attorney and I are supposed to have a conference one year, two, three, next week on the continuation of their contract and rental. And we have some issues that are technical legal, but we'll get that done for your next meeting. Alpine House, we've suspended an inducence notice and told them we're basically never gonna file suit. They have hired a demolition company, contacted the, contacted the city to, I guess, demolish it hopefully, so we don't have to go to court. But if they don't do something pretty quick, then we'll get the suit filed and get it tore down. And then that's all I have.
Okay.
I see that they're selling a bunch of the trailers, and they're selling windows and doors and anything inside the building. They've got it for sale. And they said, stick around.
Well, that's pretty standard anymore on demolitions that, that they're finding out that a lot, especially in this environment, that a lot of the stuff that's in a demo you can reuse and has some value, so that's smart. In fact, Bill Rapsel and I had a business we're in for years doing that.
I used to buy it.
So I assume they're, they're also getting rid of weight that doesn't have to go into the transfer station. I think they're, they're serious about getting it knocked down, so.
But what I, what I was saying is, they said, somebody said, do you have, what are you gonna do with it or something? And they said something like, we have plans, stay tuned. But you don't know anything about that, right?
No, I don't know. A demolition company has applied for a license to...
And somebody told me they got plans last summer, they're gonna do something.
I assume that they, that the demolition company wants, if they want to knock it down, somebody's gonna help.
Okay.
I hope.
Okay, that it? Anita?
I just have a few things, Mayor. I've been working with Telecon, Jeremai on the Facebook, and Vionne on J. Williamson. There's a lot of paperwork that goes into those and some discovery that they're gonna do. The Elected Officials Conference for MML is June the ninth and tenth. If anybody's needing any points to finish your certification for MML, notices went out for that. Today, we had Ozark River Solid Waste District quarterly meeting. There's been some grants come out, around a hundred and fifty thousand for that district. So we're gonna look, and I'll visit with Ricky and see if there's something we would want to do in that area. We had a construction meeting on the treatment plant and discussed whether we needed to start the paperwork now for a FEMA extension since it takes so long. For us to get another extension, we'll have to, it'll take a congressional act, and so that'll take a long time. The contractor thought we needed to start, and we've discussed it with the mayor. So we've started gathering our documentation for that. Working on redoing some job descriptions and looking at some departments on how they're organized. Lincoln University is in the process of tearing out their carpets and putting in new. They're getting ready to open up their doors. They're painting the whole inside of the facility and replacing all the carpets, so they're in pretty bad shape. This is Jerry University's seventy-fifth year, so they're trying to get ready for a big bash on that. They're wanting to go in and rehab the facility, painting, you know, just classing it up a bit, getting ready for the open house, a few upgrades. Growth Alliance will meet next Wednesday at nine A.M. We'll start having the community business come in and talk about themselves. We're kind of excited. We're starting with Cropper. One of their businesses is gonna come over. So if you all would like to attend that, it's here at City Hall at nine A.M. I mentioned Jim had a barbecue class up at the park on Saturday. That was his first one, so he was getting the bugs worked out, figuring out how many people we could get in the table and what we needed. And y'all are gonna enjoy the fruits of his labor because he smoked y'all a brisket for tonight, so you might want to stick around for that. Highway Wide and St. Robert Boulevard, Jeff talked to me about that and said that wouldn't be ready to start right now. He said they would give me a week notice so I could notify the businesses when it's actually gonna start in the middle of the summer. Mayor Steve and I have a meeting with Jeff on Friday to go over some projects. I finished my Advanced Academy certification for the MML, so I'll get my plaque this year, so I'm excited about that. I also finished my Economic Development Certification, Recertification. It's fourteen classes. You have to take a test after each class, and you can't go on to the next one until you pass. So I am proud. I made a hundred on each class except for number thirteen, and I made ninety-one. I do have that recertification done, and it'll be good for another five years. And I have close session, Mayor.
Okay. Can we go back and review Jeff again on Highway Wide?
Sure.
He didn't say why?
Well, they can't get the materials the contractor can't. There's a certain kind of pipes they need. American will address it probably better than me, and they just don't have the availability of it, you know? We planned this thing to start in the early spring, early, early spring.
We started this four years ago.
Yeah, so that the businesses and the citizens weren't hindered in the summer. But the mayor and I talked this morning. It looks like it's gonna probably start in the dead of summer. Probably be a nightmare for us to go through, but... Anyway, it's just materials. They're not able to get the materials.
Nothing made in the USA.
Excuse me. Okay. Mr. Wallace, if you want to introduce your students again?
Sure.
So we got them live at five.
Anthony Rocky and Jeremai, working toward all my seniors who are in the group.
Okay, with that, the meeting's being closed. Or the next meeting is May twenty-fourth, five P.M. Meeting is being closed pursuant to Missouri Law Chapter six, ten dash oh two one. Include Section one legal, Section two real estate, and Section three personnel. Get a motion?
Motion.
Linda makes a motion. Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call away.
Teresa?
Yes.
Linda? Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. You mind if we talk now or...